Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Welcome to Lincoln County Commission on this bright and sunny April 2nd, one day after April Fool's Day. No comment on that one. I was... We're trying to be professional here, and that's kind of difficult for me. Before we really begin, there are two items that are going to come off the agenda. There will be the item number one, dealing with the purchase of property, and number seven, a board action on an agreement with the South Dakota DOT. So Commissioners, we are removing item number...
Just a second.
One and number seven.
That's not right.
You said number seven.
Seven on the consent is the one that I wanted to remove.
Oh, consent agenda, excuse me. My bad.
Nope.
So, item number seven will remain on the regular agenda. Item number seven is coming off the consent agenda.
And that will not go on the regular today.
Okay, alright. So Commissioners, we need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Aaron, second by Landine. Any discussion? Christina, do you want to call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Next item, we have to look at our consent agenda with number seven taken off. Do we have a motion to approve this consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Aaron, second by Landine. Further discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Brings us to our regular business, and as we said, we will start with item number two. Our auditor will explain what that request is.
Good morning, Sherri Lynn, Lincoln County Auditor. Coming to you today with two requests. My first request would be to add a position to my office of Finance Manager. The position's primary responsibilities would be to understand and implement financial tasks related to the auditor's office. The position would encompass the chief deputy auditor's responsibilities and would also include preparing financials report, grant tracking, and all other aspects of the tax levy process. The second request would be upon hiring of the finance manager to reclassify the current chief deputy auditor from a 107.7 to an election coordinator 106.10. The duties of the chief deputy auditor would be transferred to the finance manager. And however, in reviewing of the previous classification of election specialists, it is not in line with the duties performed or in comparison to medium to large counties because the position has oversight of temporary staff and election day workers. The reclassification would be budget neutral. There would be no hourly wage change in the reclassification. And adding the finance manager would be between 33.63 and 37.11 per hour. There has been a vacancy created in the auditor's office. That position would not be replaced. Instead, this would be the new position, replacing the old position type. And if you approve it, then we'll start recruitment for it right away.
Just a question, Sherri. Wasn't this some suggestions that came from our fan? Did they make any recommendations to you that would affect this kind of stuff?
They did. They told me to try to recruit for a higher management. I haven't done it. I've tried to reclassify the position a couple times, do more things. But now I'm actually putting it where it's a higher wage, more responsibilities, so that hopefully I can get what I'm actually needing to do.
Any other questions we have for our auditor on the changes and the requests for the new hires? If not, our chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Do you have public comment?
Oh, public comment, excuse me, I gotta get that public comment in there.
Betty Atten, 46787-273rd Street T. I think this is absolutely fabulous. I think it's needed. Chad and I were talking earlier that this is... We've watched that office for the last four years. This is the most... Under Sherri, this is now the most well-run, one of the most well-run departments here in the courthouse. And I support this 100%, and I hope that you do too. Thank you.
I would agree with you, Betty. Now, Chair, will entertain a motion?
It's all moved.
Motion by Landine, second by...
Also moved.
Or Commissioner Gibbon, since he's not here, if that's okay. Any other further discussion? If not, Christina, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries 5-0. Number three, Carla.
Hey, thank you.
Morning, Carla. Homework.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Carla Gosin, Director of Equalization. This morning, I come before you to be in compliance with South Dakota Codify Law 103-14. I am to meet with the Commissioners regarding the performance and duties of the Equalization Office. I'm responsible for discovering, listing, and valuing all property in the county for tax purposes. The Equalization Office has a number of additional duties, which include processing all the transfers and plaits that are to be placed on the assessment roll, reviewing all abatements, administering all state laws pertaining to the ad valorem tax system, providing for the review of appeal of property assessments, testifying in court on those assessments, and maintaining all tax relief programs, and tracking all other exemptions in the county. This year, I have a binder for each one of you with some information that is going to be very familiar to you and some that is new information that I'm providing for this meeting. I'm going to provide you with some current stats, some averages of our changes from '23 to '24, factors, understanding our factors, appeal reports, and what our appeal reports will look like for equalization this year. So with the valuation of property, assessors throughout the entire state use a mass appraisal process. Mass appraisal is the procedure to determine the market value of property within the county. Mass appraisal is the process of valuing a group of properties as of a given date using common data, standardized methods, and statistical testing. To determine a valuation, assessors must rely on valuation equations using the Vanguard and the Marshall Swift cost manuals, tables, and schedules developed through mathematical analysis of market data. Values for individual parcels should not be based solely on the sale price of the property rather than evaluation schedules, models, that are consistently applied to the property data with correct, complete, and up-to-date information. When this process is properly administered, the development, construction, and the use of the CAMA system results in a valuation system characterized by accuracy, uniformity, equity, and reliability. The accuracy of the values depends first and foremost on the completeness and accuracy of the property characteristics and market data. Annual reappraisal cycles with onsite inspections and verification of the sales are needed to ensure the accuracy. All property in South Dakota is assessed annually, but not all properties are inspected each year. Existing parcels are inspected periodically depending on the reappraisal schedule, the review of neighborhoods, the request from property owners, or changes to the property. New properties are inspected from the start of the building permit to the completion of the building permit, then are inspected periodically with the assessor's reappraisal cycle. So that's just an overview of the mass appraisal system in South Dakota. On the next set of pages... Is a sheet that's very familiar with the Commission. Carter, can you switch that to a landscape instead of... Thank you. On this next set of information, we have current information, and then we have historical information. I'm just going to go through the current information with the Commissioner. The historical information is for your review later on. So like I had mentioned before, part of the duties of the assessor's office is to look at all property transactions that happen each year. Our assessment year starts as November 1. This year was November 1 of '22 to October 31, 2023. Those were the transfers or the sales that we are required to use to place an assessment for the '24 assessment year. There was a total of 2,814 property transfers within those dates. That's on average a 28% decrease from the previous year. And if you noticed the historical data, last year we were 7% less than the year before. We're back to a 2020 number. Of those 2,800 property transfers, 294 of those were ag transfers. 39 of those transfers were good arms-length transaction, which gives us an assessed-to-market ratio of 20.91%. So our agricultural properties are only being valued at 20.9% of their market value. And that's because in the state of South Dakota, we use a productivity system for valuation. I have to keep track of the stats for agricultural sales because I can't be over-market value. So that's why I'm sharing that statistic with you. Our non-ag transfers, we had 2,520 non-ag transfers, of which 1,110 were good arms-length transactions. Our median sales ratio was 83.96%. State law requires us to be at at least 85% assessed value. Codify law says full market value, which is 100%. But the state allows us to be between 85 and 100%, and that's for tax purposes. Some notes that I had given with that information. Prior to any reviews, reappraisal, or market increases, 8% of our sales were over 100%. 54% were under 85. So more than half of our sales were under 85%. So that statistically, we needed to do some reviews. And what did we do? We did a lot of different things this year, and I'll get into that. But after all of our reviews, after all of our increases, now 14% of our sales are over 100%. Not only 25% are under 85%. So with our reviews, our statistics improved. I know last year, one of the questions was, why do we have 14% of our sales over 100%? There's many reasons why. There are properties that are purchased and then improvements made. So I bought a home for $100,000, and now I got a building permit for lower-level finish that increased that value. So now it looks like we're over-market value. So that's one of the reasons. Condition changes that we haven't caught on to is another reason why we're over 100%. In T, in Delapre, in Springdale, and Harrisburg, we haven't had an inspection on some of those properties in over eight years. So some of our information is outdated. Another reason why we're over 100% on some of those sales are foreclosures. We have a handful of foreclosures that still happen in Lincoln County. So what did we do for '23 versus '24 to improve our statistics for '24? We did a land study throughout all of Lincoln County. Most affected were the top five townships, Sioux Falls, Harrisburg, and T. We also had a complete cost manual updater, conversion took place. Prior to this year, we were using a 2008 costing manual. That was old and outdated, didn't have some of the detailed information that we're seeing in the improvements today. So we converted to a 2020 costing manual. Some of the major increases within that manual was detached structures, attic finishes, egg structures, and mobile homes. On average, with the conversion from our 2008 to 2020, the increases were about 20%. But on some of those highlighted, we increased anywhere from 30% to 35% specifically on mobile homes and egg structures. If you have a home with an attached garage, you may have gone up about 8% on average. We'll get into that statistic later. But if you had a home with a detached garage, you may have went up about 11% or 12%. So that shows you where our costing manual is different depending on whether you have additional detached structures. In preparing for '25 assessment year, some of the things that I am looking at to do is, since we have no property record cards, they've all been scanned in, looking at electronic devices. So when appraisers go out and do an inspection, they have a device where they can check out parcels from the office and go out in the field to do assessments. When I looked at making copies of our property record cards that are digitally stand-in, we were looking at a cost and waste that was just outrageously... I mean, just not even practical or economical for Lincoln County. Some of our copies, we were in six-digit numbers. Not only the waste, but the cost alone for just paper was, you know, in the thousands of dollars. So we're looking at some electronic devices. Our first go-around with IT, we were given some devices that were pulled from sheriff's cars. But those devices were slow, they're bulky. I think the amount of time appraisers would be spending out in the field and trying to pull up each parcel was not going to be a good fit for us. So Jake has got some ideas on some other electronic devices that he's going to share or purchase. We need to get our letters ready, our forms ready, divide the territory up, and then appraise our assignments. So that's one of the things that we're going to be doing for '24 year, getting ready for '25. Another change that we're going to do... I don't know if anybody has really paid attention to legal descriptions and how Lincoln County has written legal descriptions over the period of time. I know why they did it, but I think we need to change it. Currently, the legal description says Canton, Fitz, and Ben, Lot 1, East 20, Lot 20, in the north half vacated alley block 9. What does that even mean? I don't... I mean, I can pick it apart and determine it, but how it should read... Lot 1 and the east 20 feet of Lot 2, including the north half of vacated alley, block 9 Fitzgerald and Benedict's Edition, City of Canton. I had no idea there was not an addition called Fitz and Ben. Until about 2020, I'm like, whoa, Ben and Fitz Edition, that's an addition. There's no such thing as Ben and Fitz. It's Benedict's, Fitzgerald and Benedict's. Another addition that's just terribly abbreviated is Rudd's Edition. Hey, I thought Canton had Rudd's Edition. No, it's Rudolph's. So some of these legal descriptions are poorly written, terribly abbreviated, and they really need to get changed. Jake and I have been, you know, pulling our hair out, struggling to find a way that we could convert some of these, doing it in an electronic way. But the only way to do these is to rewrite them, the way they should be written. With the Beacon information that I have and looking around at all other counties, there's no other county that writes them like this. So that's on one of my hot topics to get changed. It's been on the radar for several years, but I think this is the year that we can do it. With this project, we need to be 100% accurate. 100%. So it's going to go through several tiers of quality assurance. And I'm hoping to maybe look at some outside, maybe a GIS or something where we can, you know, do the final quality assurance check on this. And it has to be someone that's very familiar with legal descriptions. I don't think this is a project for everybody. Another project that I have that is going to be crucial, not only for compliance purposes, but moving forward with technology. Back in 1995, maybe, Lincoln County decided to use an O for their owner occupied classification. It clearly states you need to... It needs to be an S. That will change nothing on the tax part. That will change nothing on how your real estate assessment notice, tax notice, looks like. This is an inner-office change. We need to change our Os to S's to be in compliance with law and statute. The next set of information that I want to present with the Commission, some upcoming workshops and conferences, if you're interested. SDAO is in Aberdeen this year, so that's the South Dakota Association of Assessing Officers. That's June 4 through the 7. The NACRO Conference, which is the North Central Regional Conference, that's in Carney, Nebraska. That's August 12 through the 15. I am currently on the executive board for NACRO. It's a great conference. If you can't make it to an international conference, a NACRO conference is a very good conference to attend. It has great sessions for the assessors. And then our annual school. If anybody's interested in going to school and learning how to become an assessor, that's going to be in Chamberlain in September. We also have, and I didn't put it on here, there is probably one of the closest international association conferences that I can remember. It's in Denver. So that's a very close conference if anybody is interested in attending. I did attend an IAAO conference when I was with the Department of Revenue. It was in Reno, Nevada. Although I wasn't able to partake in that conference, I was in Reno to get accredited so I could teach IAAO classes. I kicked myself for not staying and enjoying the conference. But after the three days of, you know, the training for the teaching part of that, I was ready to go home. So, you know, that was always on my bucket list to attend an international conference. So it's close, it's on my radar. I don't know if I'll, you know, be able to take the time. I haven't looked at when it is, but it's something that I think anyone in the assessor's office, I think if they have the opportunity, it would be a great conference to attend. Staffing hasn't changed. Building permits. Last year, we inspected 3,400-plus building permits, of which 1,467 of them were carried over from the previous year. This year, when we start our building permits, the carryovers are 1,200. Why are they carried over? Because the constructions aren't complete. So when we have to go back, we have to make sure we get those projects completed. A new set of data that I'm bringing to the Commission, this is new information, how many parcels we've created each year. So in 2024, we created 834 parcels. '23, 1,095; '22, 1,274; '21, 891. That's a lot of parcels. That's a lot of new developments that are being done. I know in '22 and '23, the amount of parcels that we created here in Lincoln County was greater than what many Haha County created. So I'll keep track of those. I know I talked to one of the staff members that are doing the plaits, and right now, our numbers are low on our plaits. So I'm thinking the inventories are high. They're going to get rid of their inventory and then start in. So I think that's what's happening. The historical data is behind that. Our next set of information is our changes to our assessments. Could you flip that back around, Carter? So this is a new set of data that I'm bringing to the Commission on each township and city, what the median assessment change was and the average assessment change was. They should be relatively close, but when you look at the medians, it's that middle number. And the average is a cumulative total of all of them and then divided by how many parcels are in that data set. Now, these in the townships do not include agricultural properties, bare agricultural properties. Improved agricultural properties, yes, but not bare agricultural properties. And you can see where the averages can distort the median, be distorted from the median. In Highland Township, the median increase was 8.3%, but the average increase was 29.20%. And I'm like, hmm, why is that way different? There was one parcel that distorted that data set. And that parcel went from agricultural valuation to a non-agricultural valuation. It was a 3,000%, and that just distorted that average. I tried to look at each one to see what was happening. You know, sometimes when we have an appealed value from last year and we pull that appealed value off, that's going to distort the average because if the average increase was 8% and we pulled the appealed value off, you know, that property could increase by more than the average, obviously. So if you scroll down, you can see overall, countywide, the change was 6%. And overall, and that was the median change, the overall average change in Lincoln County was 8.7%. So after we made all those changes, our level of assessment went from 83. whatever percent to a 90.3% level of assessment. This didn't make your packet because I didn't have it completed by the time the information went out, but I thought this was a fun set of data to share with the Commission. Can you shrink that? So after we made all of our assessment changes last year, we look at our level of assessment in each area to come up with our 90.3. So I went back and I looked at November 1, '23 to March of '24. What are sales doing? Because nationally, locally, they're saying, oh, it's a soft market. It's decreasing. I don't see that. Because we went from in Eden and Highland, and we're going from an 88% level of assessment down to 69. Now, that's only one sale, mind you.
Now that's only one sale, mind you. But that one sale is saying, our assessments are only being assessed at 69% of what they're selling for. Now that's one sale. But it's, I'm thinking our assessments are not over market value. And I can show that time and time again, except for in Lynn Township. We were at 90%, excuse me, Lynn, Canton, Lynn and Grant. We go from 90% down to 105%. I have not looked at the sale to say, why is that happening on either one of these ends? It's just showing you what the market is doing. In Dayton Township, La Valley Township, Perry Township, there was a good, there was a dozen or more sales that happened in between those three townships. We go from a level of assessment of 88.29 down to 79%. Means dropping. So it's saying our assessments are under market value, even when nationally and locally, they're saying it's a soft market. When you look at Canton City, we ended up, after we made all of our adjustments last year, at 93%. We're already down to 83% sales. Overall, we, we ended our year, assessment year at 90.3%. We're dropping down to 8.95%. 88.95. Our commercial went from 85% level of assessment down to 71. Our commercial drags down our overall level of assessment. So when we are lowering commercial values, that's, that's shifting onto our residential folks, where we're staying strong at 90%. I mean, our, yeah. These are the number folks. I mean, it's only a four-month data set, but it's some of our lowest, um, sales months. Our November, December and January are some of our lowest sales months. Sales don't start picking up until, you know, May, June, July, August. That's when we have our higher sale months. But this was just a, just an overall re, overview of what I'm seeing with our statistical data.
I was going to go over our, our factors and how Lincoln County looks on our factors versus the rest of the state. I reached out to the state last week to get this information. Their data sets haven't been completed yet, so I'm not able to give you the 24 where, where our level of assessment is versus other counties in the state. But I can confidently tell you our level of assessment for Lincoln County is 90.3%. And as soon as I get the 24 data set, I will definitely share that with commission. 23, I just have it highlighted, two-thirds of all of South Dakota, they were coming in at their level of assessment under 90%. We were just trying to get above 85. Last, in 23, Lincoln County was at 87.7%. So, um, we weren't alone because two-thirds of the, the state were, were in the same boat as us. We were trying to, you know, our 2021 and 2022 sales were just, just outrageous years. Some of the counties, um, across the state, their taxable value, let me see, their taxable value was actually higher than their assessment. I'm trying to find an example, we had a couple last year. Right here, Lake County, or excuse me, Lawrence County. Their level of assessment after they did all their reviews and adjustments, they were 84.4%. So their taxable value was actually higher than what their assessment was. We want to avoid that. The year before, there were several counties that had, um, Corson County was 2.8% more on their taxable value than their assessment. Um, there were several counties that, that had that. And that's because, you know, we're just trying to, we're just trying to keep up and trying to get at 85% of the market. And these counties were not able to, so their taxable value had to make up for that.
Carl?
Yes.
Could I? Just so I can properly understand, each column on the top, it says ag after. Can you just, once again, go through those categories?
You bet, absolutely.
So we got 100%, which means that's where you're supposed to be?
Right. So the INT is intentions. Each year by January 1, the assessors have to send the Department of Revenue our intentions. What do you intend to do to, to be in compliance with the 85 to 100%? So the ag after intentions. That's that, that 100%. So after all of the analysis was done on agricultural properties, counties were at 100%. And what, with ag, the thing that the Department of Revenue is looking at is, are they using the productivity model? And are they making any adjustments to that productivity model that are not approved by the Department of Revenue? Bennett County chooses not to use the productivity manual in whole. So after all, the analysis that they either don't send to the state, the state's saying you're not at 100% of, of productivity model method. So you're only at 91%. So they're going to apply a factor of 92.6% to get to that 85% taxable level. So you can see all of these counties that are using the productivity model and not making any adjustments, not approved by the Department of Revenue. You're at 100% on your agricultural properties and your factor is 85. And then the non-ag factor after intentions is that as well. So we, remember when I started and I said we were at 83.96 before we made any adjustments? And then after we made adjustments, I ended up at 90.3%. Flawed numbers, but yeah, I, I know, yes.
So this is a question I get from a few people. And I think the devil is in the details. So could you explain for us, explain to the public, why it moves from 85 to 90.3?
Yes. So it, when we started, after we had our assessments versus what is selling, we ended up at a level of assessment at 83.96%. What moves it from the 83.96% to the 90.3% are our land value changes and our market adjustments. There were some underlying factors this year that we haven't had in previous years, and that's that cost manual update. So that was also a, one of the reasons why we saw a change in values.
Was, yeah, and I think that's what, um, I don't think that the public has been informed on that. Because one of the comments I keep getting is from a lot of people this year is they think there is systematically a problem or an error. Could you just explain a little bit about why the cost manual changed and how that works? Who drove that?
Vanguard, the cost manual changes, okay, so it depends on what manual you use. So in the Marshall Swift costing manual, there are quarterly market, excuse me, quarterly cost adjustments. Assessors in the state of South Dakota, because it's November 1 assessment year, they choose to use the third quarter to make their manual adjustment. Counties do that annually. When you're using the Vanguard cost manual, that manual has not changed since 2008. So in 2022, when they started rolling out the new cost manual on all the Vanguard folks in the state of South Dakota, many, many counties throughout the state, they can't do every county at once. We were scheduled for the 23 years. So there were counties throughout the state of South Dakota that the 2020 cost manual was applied in 2021, 2022, and then 2023, until all the counties have the new costing manual. When a costing manual isn't completely, completely, completely updated, what assessors use as a tool to stay within, uh, market ranges is we were making market adjustments. So even though the costing manual was a 2008 cost manual, we were making significant market adjustments to stay, maintain market value. When we applied our conversion on our cost manual, on average, folks saw about a 20% increase. But we didn't need to increase our, our costs by 20%. So we, we went back and we went to each taxing jurisdiction, Eden Township, Prairie Township, Canton City, Sioux Falls, Sioux Falls is chunked out into neighborhoods, um, Harrisburg and T. And we applied those new costing manuals to what has sold. And some of those area adjustments, we had to roll back because we didn't need to increase 20% that the cost manual increased. We may have only needed to increase 6%. So we rolled back our location factor to 14% instead of the 20% that we may have been on.
And when you say we didn't need to, what do you, what do you, what drives the need?
What drives the need to?
To either, just now you said, we didn't need to increase to 20%. Basically, you didn't need to do what the manual told you to. What, how do you calculate, how do you tell a regular taxpayer what that need is?
Well, our, our need is we need to stay current and up to date with the costing manuals. That's, that's administrative law. I mean, we need to maintain the most updated costing manual. And we did that by applying our 2020 manual that we have. And then we are applying those new costing methods that are very systematic, that are very uniform, to properties that have sold. And then we determine our market conditions on, based on location, style, age. You know, there's 12 different ways that we look at properties. You know, we, we're not using our town homes or duplexes to value our single-family homes. And we're not using our two-story homes to value our one-story homes. So we go through a lot of that analytical type process, and that's where that statistical testing comes into play. We look at it every which way that we can. Because when we want, when we determine what increase is going to be applied to your property, your property, your property, as long as you have the same property, it's, it's moving at the same, same level. And then we apply all of that, that, those new values to what has sold. And then we determine, how did we do? How did we do? Our level of assessment is 90.3, but there's other accuracy, uh, analytical type statistics that we look at. We look at, um, you know, our coefficient of dispersion. We look at the price-related differentials, you know, our high, high-dollar homes being equally assessed in comparison with our low-valued homes. Our coefficient of dispersion is going to tell us how tight our data set is, you know? We have standards in the assessment world that our coefficient of dispersion can't be over 25%. So we try to maintain that, that statistic to not only be in compliance with market, but to keep our, our, our statistics tight and equal and fair and uniform. It's all a form of the uniformity of, of everything that we do is all about staying in compliance and being uniform and treating everybody fair. We're using the same cost manual on your property and your property, everybody's property. We're valuing our agricultural structures depending on, um, no matter where you're at in the county, you know, from the northern end to the southern end. I guess, you know, I, it's hard for me to explain all of what we do in, in a half hour. I sat down with a lady for an hour and a half yesterday. And it, it's, it, it's nothing you can explain in 10 minutes or 15 minutes. And sometimes when we look at appeals, we're giving folks 10 minutes to state their appeal and then have some type of rebuttal, and then you guys make a, a decision. If they, if they want to know more about the assessment process, they can come in. They absolutely can come in, and I will be more than happy to show them the manual, the, the, the computer, the computer part of it, all of our statistical testing, any laws that pertain to that testing. It's not easy, that's why there's a year's worth of training for assessors, and that's why there's, there's, there's other years that we have to stay in compliance with our certification. We have to attend schools and conferences because things change. And the world is changing in the matter of, you know, homes being built on slabs. You know, that was very, you know, very unique at one time, now it's a normal. You know, walkout basements versus garden level versus flat, you know? It, it, the perception in people's mind was it was more expensive to have a, a walkout basement. You're going to get more money for a walkout basement, but that's not always true in today's world. I don't want to buy a house with a walkout basement, I don't feel safe in my neighborhood anymore. You know, there's, there's, the, the market changes based on taste and preference and styles and design. And with the mass appraisal process, that's what we're trying to determine. Anything else? So understanding your factor, what is the factor, what does it do?
The main purpose of the factor is to create a taxable value. So statistically, when we look at our level of assessment, that is equal to our median ratio. So we can be assessing at 100%, the state's going to give us a factor of 85% and we're going to tax you at $85,000 on this $100,000 home. Well, if assessor says, well, I don't want to be at 100%, I only want to be at 90%. So we have a $90,000 value. Our factor is .944 now, because the calculation for your factor is 85%. That's our target, divided by the level of assessment, that's our middle ratio, gives you a factor of .941. So the assessor says, I only want to be at 90% of value. So now our value is only, say, 90,000, gives you a factor, and your taxable value is 84,960. It's the same taxable va- factor, no matter what number game the assessor decides to play. Well, the assessor says, well, I only want to be at the very minimum, I only want to assess properties at 85%. Our factor now is one, same taxable va- taxable value of 85,000. So no matter where the assessor determines their level of assessment, your taxable value doesn't change. And I give you some more examples here. It, it just doesn't change the taxable level.
You know, Carl, that's probably the hardest thing for people to understand. And if their assessed, their assessed value is at 190 or 85, their taxable value their taxable value remains the same. I mean, I tried to explain that to somebody and said, that sounds like a political answer. But it is very difficult for them, who sets this factor? Is that the state?
The, the state does the calculation. The eighty-five percent is law. You know, we're going to tax property at eighty-five percent. Where assessors come in, we did, we are deciding where our level of assessment is at. So when I send in my intentions and I have my audit and they verify I did what I said I was going to do, and after the audit, they say, yep, Carla, you're at ninety point three percent, like you said you are, because I looked at all of your data. They do the calculation, eighty-five divided by ninety point three. And then officially, we get an, a, a notice from the Department of Revenue. So the Department of Revenue is the official, they do the calculation. We supply them with the information, they verify the information. Carla did what she said she was going to do. We verified it through our audit trail. And now they can determine what the taxable factor will be. Are we ready to talk appeals? Because that's all we've, you betcha.
This is another comment that keeps floating around out there. Maybe this is where the world of the equalization director merges with the auditor. But can you maybe just explain how, you know, the Director of Equalization, you know, let me, I want to phrase this correctly.
That's okay.
You don't make these calculations based upon how much money the county needs, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So it's not as if Carla Gosin is out there saying, I want Lincoln County to have thirty-five million bucks this year, right?
I do not.
Okay. So I just wanted to, you know, make sure the commission, the public knows that the valuation doesn't depend, excuse me, the, the assessed values aren't driven necessarily by how much the county needs, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
My have, I have one sole reason, and that's is to value your property. I have no idea, and I, it's true, I have no idea what effect that will have on taxes. Because the taxes are determined by the school needs, the county needs, the city needs, the township needs. And if they see a valuation out there, they're determining what their budgetary needs to function as a taxing entity based on the assessed values. I'm not doing that. They are.
Thank you.
Carla, before you go into appeals, thank you for, there is a tremendous amount of information here. So I commend you and your staff for compiling all of this and having this available for commissioners or any of the department heads to better understand how complicated and detailed this taxing process is. This isn't widgetry. This is a very detailed situation and the laws that you have to comply with and the audits that you go through. So, so just thank you for supplying all of this. I think this is a lot of data that we can use to help explain to taxpayers how they got, what, what, those little notices they got in the mail, which they probably didn't like, but that's the facts and real. Okay.
Great.
Appeal.
Thank you. So believe it or not, our appeal numbers are slightly lower than last year. So our appeal numbers are down. We had three hundred and eighty-five appeals to the, the local boards. Last year, we were closer to four hundred. So our appeal numbers are down slightly. I never see it, I, I don't think Lincoln County is going to see appeal numbers drop significantly because we have, a lot of the time, we have the same people appealing. These, a lot of these names are very familiar with what was last year. And what happens is it gets lowered and then we, the assessor raises it back up because the reason for the adjustments isn't always, you know, is clearly is defined. So we had three hundred and eighty-five going to local board. Now with our appeals going down, county boards will see an increase. And because I have raised, I have appealed back sixty percent of the local board decisions. I felt this year, I'm not sure what happened, and this is, this is me telling you what it looks like. We had some taxing jurisdictions lower it even, even more so than what the requested value was. So we had, and it was uniformly less. We had thirty-six properties where we have six sales right across the street of the exact same home or property that was selling between three hundred and fifty thousand and three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. The local board raised their whole development down to two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. I had to appeal those back. That did not make any sense. And, you know, that, it just, there's just so many of those examples. That's why I raised back sixty percent of the local board. I'm, I'm appealing back sixty percent of those decisions. Just the reasoning was, just the reasoning for the valuation decrease was not a decision that was credible. They said they didn't like the assessor's comparables. They were nearly identical properties, nearly identical, within a few square feet.
So Carla, this, the net number of appeals that we have this year, three hundred and eighty-five, is that a high watermark? Or where are we at in terms of the number of appeals in comparison to previous years?
That's, it's slightly lower than last year. We were just at about four hundred appeals last year. I think there was like three ninety-six. So it's just slightly less. But the amount of appeals that the County Board of Equalization is going to be greater. And today's the deadline, so there's still time to appeal to county board. Right now, as we, as I came down here this morning, we have a hundred and forty-one appeals coming to county board. We have, currently, we have three owner-occupied appeals. The rest are valuation appeals.
Do you think that we've, or your office has gotten a handle on educating folks about the owner-occupied issue? You know, I mean, many years in the past, we have these folks coming in saying, I mean, basically, they missed the deadline. Or they happen to fall into that window of time where, you know, they're developed, when they purchased the property from their developer. Because, you know, it seems like most of them, if not all, are probably as a result of transferring from developer to that new owner-occupied status. I mean, do you think we've gotten better with that or not?
That is a great question, and thank you for bringing that up because that's one of the things that we changed this year. With our owner-occupied application, we sent a cover letter explaining it in detail of what it, what it is, what it's going to do. And we have the highest return rate of applications that we've ever had. So yes, I, I hope we have done better.
Thank you for doing that.
Just from looking at the numbers, Carla, it would appear that your townships are, are not that right. But their cities themselves of Sioux Falls and Harrisburg and T. and places like that, which have growing school systems, would naturally probably have the greatest number of appeals, right?
I haven't had the time, but I'm probably still going to do it. I wanted to map out where those appeals were within school districts. I think that would have told some story, maybe. But yes, Harrisburg has, I, I, the numbers in Harrisburg appeals is, I've never seen that number that high. Let's see. Your guys' schedule? I wanted to remind you that, and if, if something changes, please let me know because we have sent out a handful of hearing dates and times. But right now, we have three commissioners that are on, on the schedule for hearings, and that is a quorum. So we've, we've done that. We have allowed in the past phone-in hearings, so folks that were not able to attend, they can phone in and talk to the commissioners in regards to their appeal. With that being said, we cannot have a commissioner call in. So we'd still need three people in their seat in order for that to happen. Okay? So we need three people in their seat for a quorum and for, to allow a hearing to be held via telephone. Just wanted to remind you of that. That's what the schedule looks like, and this is what the information is going to look like this year, very similar to last year, but you're not going to have thirty pages per appeal. We have scaled that back. That was a trial and, you know, we're, it was good information. Don't get me wrong, but it was a lot of information. It was hard to keep track of. We narrowed it down to approximately like eleven pages, nine to eleven pages. Your first page is going to be the subject, so the property that's appealing. We're going to give you all the same great details that we have given in the past. Ownership name, the detailed information, square footage, the type, the style, one-story, basement finish, sketches, assessment history, any additional photos that we think are relevant to just understanding what property is being appealed. We are giving you at minimum four appeals, or, excuse me, four comparables. Now keep in mind, we did not use these four comparables to come up with the subject's valuation. This is a property in Harrisburg. There were hundred and ninety sales that we used to determine what the assessment change was going to be. Not these four sales. These are sales to show like properties of the market range that we think that the subject property could get. Not just these four sales were used to determine that valuation. It was the hundred and ninety sales in Harrisburg or whatever jurisdiction we're, we're looking at. So we'll have the subject property. We'll have some comparables for you to see so you can understand what the market is in, in that particular area for a very similar property. We have a blended mix of twenty-three and twenty-two-year sales. We tried to use as many current sales, but we also used an older sale in twenty-two. And one of the reasons is the current valuation on the twenty-two sales were still not over-market value on our older sales. So it was one of those, like, we're not over-assessing even our older sales currently. We're going to have the three approaches to value page, so we'll have the subject's price per square foot and the valuation using the cost approach to value on the four properties that we're using to show you the range and then the market comparison. This appellant request value, that is directly from the PT seventeen, and that's the appeal form. That's the requested valuation from the appellant. We're going to show you the assessed value that went out, what the local board changed it to, and what we're recommending. Though it's an assessor recommendation, it's the county board's decision. We'll show you a map of where the subject is located and the comparables that we're showing on our comparable summary. And then the last few pages, it will be all the same detailed information of the comparables that we gave you with the subject property. Any questions on that?
I apologize if one of these or two of these questions may have already been answered with my absence. But just to review the state's number percentage, do they collect that? Do we send it to them? How does that number actually get derived?
The state's number.
The percentage of comparable to, to what our assessment is versus their factor.
Oh, the factor, okay.
So how does that, do they collect it? Do we send it to them? How does that, how does that data come into play?
I send them that data.
And so, do we send them all sales?
All the sales.
All sales, okay.
All the sales, all the two thousand eight hundred and whatever. They verify that the sales that we were used, the eleven hundred that were the good non-egg sales, they verify that those are truly good arms-length transactions. I send them my intentions on, I'm, I changed the land value. We made some market adjustments to our costing manual and what our total value is. And they verify that I did that.
Okay, thank you.
And then I come up at the, and then they look at the median, and that's that middle number. And that median is our level of assessment, and they verify that that truly is the level of assessment. State law says you tax at eighty-five percent, so it's eighty-five percent divided by the level of assessment for the county, and that's how they determine the factor.
Yeah, I was just curious if all data went or if we.
All data.
All data goes, thank you. And then other question I had is, in your, any of your training, do you see any role for AI to come in and simplify or assist in the assessment of properties currently? Or is that still not being talked about at all?
I haven't heard anything about that.
All right, thank you. That's all my questions. Ms. Chairman.
A form that's going to be different this year, I think better. This was a comment by one of the commissioners, I forget who. Assigned agreement between property owner and assessor on evaluation change. So during our appeal process, folks have called in and they'll say, well, my, my building is down and you're assessing it. Or the condition on my property has changed and you're assessing it at a good condition and it should be in poor condition. So assessors went out, reviewed the property, made the adjustments necessary, reworked the property record card, and then came up with a different value. If the homeowner was in agreeance with it, we have a stipulation sheet that we are going to produce for boards of equalization. We will set a time on these stipulation forms. We're not doing the complete write-up. They agreed to it. I agreed to it. And we'll present those on the very last session of, of equalization each, each session block. So in Harrisburg, we'll show you all the Harrisburg stipulations. And then you can, we'll let the property owner know that they have a time set up for the stipulations to be heard by the board and then watch the process happen.
Well, and thank you for doing this this year, Carla. I, I noticed that specifically the example form you're using here is Mr. Devitt. I'm very familiar with that property. You know, they burned down, they, they burnt down or demolished that house on the corner there, so, which I'm going to guess is probably the reason for the lowering in value of the property.
It looks like it, yes.
Yeah, that structure is no longer there, so, but thank you for doing, implementing that.
You're welcome. I think it was a great, great suggestion.
Anything else, Carl?
I don't know. How much more time do I have? No, just leaving it up for questions, if you guys have any additional questions. I could talk all day.
You know, Carla, I think it's gonna take time to probably digest some of this stuff.
Yes.
And, you know, for the public and everything else, you know, whenever you start lowering someone's values or taxes, uh, it's called equalization. Somewhere along the line, someone or somebody or some other property has to assume that, 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 that reduction. So, um, and you certainly understand and are empathetic to the property owners, because this year has been some substantial, uh, tax increases, as you would see on some of the examples that you gave us, so. It's a, uh, it's, it's not a fun task to do, but, uh, that's part of the whole process, so. But again, I thank you for what you've provided for us.
Thank you.
Meaningful data. Anything else? Any other questions for Carla?
There is a ring attached to all of the, the pages. You know, you can unhook your binder, pull off the ring, and then if I could have the binder back, we can reuse those.
You want them back?
Whenever, just leave them on your desk, and Sherry can collect them for me, or I can come down later.
Well. I run a law office. I run a law office. These things are expensive.
Yeah.
I'm sure Commissioner Landin can attest, that these add up over the course of a year.
Yes, that's why I wanna reuse them.
They definitely do.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll kick, pick that up. Next item on our agenda, on number three, is our.
Oh. You have a request for public comment?
Public comment. Excuse me, excuse me. I'll get that down, I'll write it down here.
She did.
She did.
But she'll, she'll be listening.
She'll be listening, it'll be in the matter of record, Betty.
It's a, it's a public comment, not public inquisition.
No, I was just curious, because when we got our, um, Betty Otten, four-six-seven-eight-seven-two-seventy-third Street, N.T., when we got our yellow assessment slip, this year, it was like devoid of almost all the information that was on there from last year, including the amount, uh, the percentage that the property assessment went up, and so it was very confusing of where the assessment was, uh, and why it went up. So all the information that was at the bottom last year was completely gone, so I was just gonna ask why. Thank you.
I think when Carla hears this, uh, Betty, she may call you and try to answer that, but good, good information. Number four, board action to approve and authorize the chair to execute a contract with, uh, I'll leave you say that, Terry, uh, for a paving project.
Terry Floyd, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. Looking for, uh, board action to authorize and, uh, uh, to approve and authorize the chair to execute a contract with Dunick Incorporated for the 2024 pave project. Uh, we bid this back in February, uh, we awarded it back in maybe late February, um, to Dunick Paving in the amount of two million, two-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Questions for our highway superintendent on this contract? Hearing none. Christina, do you wanna call the roll?
Can I get a motion?
All right, we should have public comment.
Public comment, good guy, that, public comment.
Mr. Chairman, just remember this order.
Yeah.
Questions, public comment, motion.
We'll get her. I was, uh, pretty, last week, we were, we were zero, we had no problem with it, but this week, not that we disregard your public, so, forget it. Any public comment? Hearing none. Christina, now call the roll.
Of what?
I still need a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Time out. No breakfast, doesn't help. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Aaron's, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Poppins.
Somebody refill the chairman's coffee.
Could use something. Uh, Christina, try the roll this time.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landin.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries five-zero. Terry, next one, please.
Next item I have is, uh, a board action to approve and authorize the chair to execute an agreement with South Dakota Department of Transportation for a preservation grant for Structure forty-two dash zero-two-zero dash two-zero-one. Uh, and then there's a PCN number on there. Uh, the grant amount was for one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, um, oh, I forgot the decimal point there, um, for this, uh, for this structure. This was, this is on County Road one-oh-five, um, about a quarter-mile, not quite a quarter-mile, tenth of a mile south of County Road one-forty. Um, we refer to this structure as the Orange Bridge. Um, as you recall, I think, uh, probably a little over a year ago, um, I came to you, and we had a previous grant for this structure to do this work, uh, but we had bid this out, and the, uh, the, uh, the bids that came in were like six-hundred, seven-hundred-thousand dollars over what costs, cost estimates were. Uh, we tried to get additional money through granting through the state, they said no, so we relinquished this grant, and now, back in March here, uh, we were awarded this, this funding for this structure to get this work done, so.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this, uh, application for this grant for a bridge structure? If not, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion. Motion by Aaron, second by Poppins. Further questions? Christina, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landin.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries five-zero. Terry, next item.
All right. Uh, next item I have is, uh, board action to approve and authorize the chair to execute an agreement with South Dakota Department of Transportation for a preservation grant in the amount of one million, five-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, two-hundred dollars for Structure four-two dash two-four-four dash two-five-five. Uh, this structure is, uh, what we, we, uh, call it the Hudson Bridge. This is on the, across the state line going into Iowa, just east of Hudson down there. This will be budgeted in 2025, is what we're looking at. Uh, our cost, the county's cost, and this is gonna be about four-hundred-and-ten-thousand, uh, that'll be about twenty percent of the total project cost. This project is gonna be just under two million dollars total. Just a little background on this structure, this structure was built, I believe it was in two thousand eight, and we got some, we got some pretty, um, pretty invasive work that we need to do on this structure, which is, is very unfortunate, uh, that a, a bridge just new has to have this kind of work done to it, but, um, but luckily, within inspections, we're finding this, uh, the, the, the work that needs to be done, so we're gonna try to get this fixed. Just as an FYI, we, I have three of them here for you, so this is the second one. So we got three preservation grants out of this round of granting, um, for the, for back in March. We're, we were planning to possibly bid these all three together. Have a, have a start date maybe later this year, and then completion date would be at the end of next year, or something like that, uh, because one of these, or a couple of these structures, we could probably do winter work. Um, we would allow them to do winter work, and they'll leave it closed over the winter, but, um, I think that, uh, we're kinda moving away from that, um, because plans aren't gonna be ready for these next two. That first one we did, the plans, that we just have to modify them slightly, and we can probably go to bid with that probably June, May, June of this year. But, so yes, so this one here will be probably, most likely be budgeted for twenty-five, which will be in my budget coming up in a month or two here for you, so.
Okay. Any public comment on this preservation grant? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Jill, Mr. Aaron's.
I'll second.
And second by Commissioner Landin. Further comments? Hearing none. Christina, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landin.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries five-zero. Terry, next one.
Next one is, uh, board action to approve and authorize the chair to execute an agreement with South Dakota Department of Transportation for a preservation grant in the amount of nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, four-hundred dollars for Structure four-two dash one-seven-five dash one-five-three. Uh, this structure is located, uh, just south of Canton here. Um, it's a bridge crossing the Big Sioux River, going into Beloit, into Iowa over here. This is a structure that last year I brought to you, we had some emergency repairs to be done on this structure, um, as far as, uh, expansion joints on the ends were coming apart, we had to have some welding done on that, uh, to keep them plates down, um, so we do have a grant for this, and again, this will, this is a structure that we budgeted in 2025, the work will be.
Okay. Public comment on this application preservation grant? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Landin, second by Commissioner Aaron's. Further comments? Hearing none. Christina, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landin.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries five-zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Number, item number eight. Paul?
Hello. Paul Anderson, your Assistant Commission Administrative Officer. We are looking today for, to approve an agreement with JSA engineers and land surveyors for services related to development of a asphalt off-street parking lot to serve Lincoln County Courthouse in downtown Canton. That'll be for sixteen thousand, nine-hundred dollars plus applicable taxes. So as you know, we, uh, had the demolition project of the old jail right there, that is now done, um, and talking with the city of Canton, they were, um, also agreeable to installing an off-street asphalt parking lot, uh, so we reached out and got, uh, uh, quotes, we asked for quotes from about five or six, uh, local engineering firms, got four back. Of those four, uh, JSA was the lowest. An additional benefit of working with JSA on this is they are the contracted engineer for the city of Canton, so it will improve communication with the city as we, um, look at things like, uh, traffic flow, um, and meeting the city's standards.
Do you have any public comment on this, uh, proposal to get asphalt for a parking lot, for the old jail?
This is just for the engineer. This is the, the engineering work, and then.
That was my question.
Yeah.
So we're just going with the engineering work?
Yeah, this is the engineering work, uh, although this does include, um, bidding services as well, they will handle the bidding services if we move forward.
Any public comment on this? If not, board questions for Paul? If not, we'd like a motion for approval to get this taken care of?
Paul, um, how many parking spots do you, you had to take a swag at it? What do you think we're gonna get out of that?
Probably, uh, in the facts of it, and we talked about thirty-seven, it'll probably be around there, um, included in this, we're also going to look at the configuration of the existing lot, uh, next to Surtivance. Um, we, you know, talking with people, we, we think that there's a way to, there, there might be a way to get some more spaces out of there as well, um, and then comparing the size, so, yeah, we're thinking around thirty-seven parking spots, plus a crosswalk that'll go from the park, the new parking lot to the courthouse front door.
Thank you.
Further questions? Entertained a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Aaron's, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Gibbon. Further questions? Hearing none. Christina, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landin.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries four to one. Item number nine. Mr. Rasmussen?
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission. Steve Rasmussen, your Commission Administrative Officer. The first item, um, here to discuss is, uh, approval of the labor agreement between Lincoln County and Lincoln County Highway Union, Local two-two-five-three. Uh, just like to comment, this was a, a long negotiation, but I appreciate, uh, the professionalism of the highway union and the collaboration, uh, in getting this contract done. Uh, they had a current one-year agreement, so this will be a three-year, uh, going back to January one. Uh, some highlights, uh, from the county's perspective, uh, we did some updates to our handbook, uh, related to employee benefits and bringing in best practices, one being the PTO ESL program, as well as establishing evals on a hire date and promotion date as opposed to end of the year, where you end up having all these evals done, you're not having a meaningful eval. So throughout the year, it gives us the ability to give meaningful feedback to employees and developing, uh, employees. So, uh, they agreed to that, they, uh, FOP did as well, so everybody in the county is now under this, uh, standardized process, um, where now we have the same benefits for all employees throughout the county, but they're all under the same terms, so it doesn't create issues for the auditor when it comes to having a benefit with different terms for different work groups. So that is, uh, one of the advantages of this, and they'll also be part of this new ADP migration when it comes to, uh, tracking time and whatnot, so there's some efficiencies there, so. That's all, do you have any questions?
Any public comment on the approval of this, executed of our new labor contract with our highway department? Questions for, uh, close that? Do we have any questions for Steve concerning this contract from the commission? Hearing none, chair will entertain a motion.
Public.
Our public comment? We asked for that, ready?
We did.
Okay. We need a motion, this is confusing enough.
I'm moved to approve.
Motion by Landin, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Commissioner Poppins. Hearing no further comments, Christina, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landin.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries five-zero. Steve, next item?
All right, uh, this is a board action to declare real property identified as parcel ID two-hundred-point-five-zero-point-one-five-point-two-zero-zero as surplus property. This is, uh, four-point-four acres of industrial land fronting Highway eighteen at an address of four-seven-nine-three-six West Fifth Street in, uh, Canton. So, uh, this county-owned property is no longer necessarily useful or suitable for the purpose for which it was acquired, and it's recommended, the county commission declared it a surplus property. Uh, as part of, uh, South Dakota codified law, we need to, uh, engage a licensed appraiser to conduct an appraisal pursuant to it, uh, that law, and engage a licensed real estate broker to sell the property. The licensed real estate broker will not offer the property for sale until the appraisal is complete, and the date of sale should not occur until proper notice is given, uh, which requires two publication dates, with the first publication not less than ten days prior to the day of sale. Just covering that, because we'll have two additional items that'll play into that. Uh, this is property that was, uh, prior occupied by, uh, South Dakota DOT, uh, it was then, uh, gifted to the county, the county used it for the highway department until we built our new highway, um, shop, uh, out on Highway eighteen, so this property will be, uh, sold.
Steve, just a.
Return to the tax.
Maybe, uh, where, what we're voting on is to declare it surplus, is what.
Correct.
Just an item of, of reflection and history, we, the reason we acquired this is because when Lincoln County took over Highway seventeen from Minnehaw County line all the way down to Lennox, part of our agreement was that we received this property along with a huge cash, uh, settlement, so it's been with us for quite a while. Do we have any public comment on declaring this property surplus? Hearing none, further questions of Steve about the property to be, uh, declared surplus? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Landin, seconded by Aaron's. Christina, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Landin.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries five-zero. Next one, Steve?
So this is, uh, related, this is board action to approve an agreement with Shack and Appraisal Company to conduct an appraisal of the real property identified as parcel ID two-hundred-point-five-zero-point-one-five-point-two-zero-zero for, uh, up to twenty, uh, thirty-five-hundred dollars.
Public comment on this one? Hearing none, further questions of Steve?
Do we have, do we have a, I mean, that seems like a lot of money.
It's consistent with the other appraisals they've done in the area for us, and again, we are using them simply because of their prior experience with, uh, properties and, uh, the Canton area that we've used them in that purpose. and, and the Canton area that we've used them in that purpose. So it should be cheaper just because they've already, they're already familiar with the properties of the area.
Further questions? The Chair will entertain a motion?
I'll so move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Poppins? Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Gibbon? Any other questions? Christina, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Errands?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Steve?
Okay, also related, board action to approve an agreement with Bender Commercial to sell real property identified as parcel ID 200.50.15.20.
Public comment concerning the property being listed with Bender Commercial Real Estate? If there are no other comments, further questions from the commission? If not, we need board action.
I'd so move, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Poppins, motions to approve? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Landine. Further questions?
I just have a comment, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Mr. Rasmussen for inserting some language into the agreement with Bender that if there's certain contingencies met, it could save the taxpayers some money. So thank you for doing that.
Other comments? If not, Christina, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Errands?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, next item, this is board action to approve Phase One only of an agreement with AMCG, which is Aviation Management Consulting Group for consulting services at the Marvsky Lincoln County Airport for $56,480. Just some background on this, the county commission hired an airport manager, Dave Myers, who's here today for any questions that may come up, on June 1st of 2023, to begin the process of developing and improving the Marvsky Lincoln County Airport. The commissioner's vision is to provide a modern and well-maintained general aviation airport for the Sioux Falls metropolitan area that complements rather than competes with the Sioux Falls Regional Airport. As part of that vision, we need to ensure a self-sustaining entity that is not dependent on the county's general fund for operations. We need market-based, inflation-adjusted rent and fee structures for both existing and future improvements at the airport to maintain this enterprise and its facilities and services for the long term. This metric cannot be achieved without the assistance of third-party professional consulting services to conduct a comprehensive airport assessment, a review of existing lease agreements, and a regional airport rent study. After completing a nationwide search of vendors, we recommend AMCG provide these airport consulting services. Just to cover this proposal that's in here, there is Phase One and Phase Two, which is sort of an à la carte of various services. Phase One, once that's completed, we'll be able to see what weaknesses we have at the airport. And Phase Two, there's a possibility with an update, update to our airport layout plan and master plan, which Hells Engineering helps us with, could make some of those Phase Two items grant-eligible under the FAA's Airport Improvement Program grant. So that AIP grant could pay for some of these future services once they've been identified in the Phase One.
Dave, do you have any comments you want to make to the commission? Any things you would like to share? You've been sitting here patiently, so...
Thank you, Dave Myers, airport manager. I think it's what Steve just mentioned, I think we need some direction. It's been pretty, I wouldn't say neglect, but there's been some neglect out there. And I think as we move forward here, making, not a competitive with the Sioux Falls Regional Airport, but just competitive in the local areas to draw aircraft and hangar owners and things like that to our airport. I think this is a really good start. And with fees concerning to rent and also to lease agreements, I think something needs to be pretty concrete. I think this firm would do a really sound job for us and we can move forward with that.
Are's our hangars all used? Do we have any hangar space available?
There's zero hangar space available. It's just, there's a demand out there. There's, I get a call once a week for someone that wants to put their aircraft out at our airport. So there's a huge demand.
Okay. Is it, Dave? You know, I'm just looking at Phase One here, but are they going to get into the weeds and giving us some consultation on what to do with hangar space out there? And cost and potential construction alternatives and things like that? Because I know we kind of looked at this a few years ago and we really couldn't come up with a solid model as to how it was going to work, you know, financially. Just wasn't going to net out for the county.
I think the research that Steve has done, and we've talked to this group already through a Zoom call and so forth like that, I think this, this group is going to get their hands dirty. I think they'll be, they're going to come physically to the airport. And also, I think they're going to start off with some meetings just by Zoom and so forth. But they will be at our airport. And I think if they do that, they'll see kind of what we have there and we can move forward that way. So I think it's going to be a really good group to work with and they're going to give us some sound advice.
What do you think we're looking at for a completion time of this? Six months to a year?
I think they said between six to eight months is kind of the target where they want to be. So I think they'll get, as soon as we get the green light, I think we're going to get some sound communication started right off the bat.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Mr. Poppins?
Mr. Chair, I serve as the liaison to the board. I'm going to give a quick history. When I got on the board 2002, it would have been one of my objectives to close this airport. Over time, I've learned the process of what it has meant for the county to be the owner of the airport and the ability for it to do anything with that airport. And then I got into appreciating the airport that has a uniqueness to it, that serves the community. But I don't lose the desire to make this airport more self-sufficient. Unfortunately, sometimes it does require that we have to make expenditures ahead of time, i.e. the land purchase that we'd got reimbursed with. And I think this falls again under where if we want it to become more feasibly independent to the financial burden to the taxpayers of the county, we have to make some of these expenditures ahead of time. And that is why I hope there's support for this today. I don't like spending money any more than anybody else, but I do believe that if we want to have the end game of making this less of a burden to the taxpayers of the county, this is something we need to do. So, thank you.
Any other questions for Steve or David? Public comment on this issue concerning the phase of agreement with AMCG Aviation Management on their consulting services? If not, if we have no further questions, Chair will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll offer the motion to approve the study?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Poppins, second by Commissioner Errands to approve. Hearing no other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I want to thank Commissioner Poppins for bringing this forward, as well as Mr. Myers. I think there's a lot of potential yet to be squeezed out of that airport out there. And I'm looking forward to the results of this study and seeing what more we can do. And we had that citizen group that came together a year ago or so with Commissioner Poppins and Commissioner Gibbon. And I, I think this is just an extension of that, so happy to see this.
Thank you. No other, well, Christina, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Errands?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Very much. We have now reached the time for a public comment. Do we have any public comment today? Harold?
Harold Timmerman from the Emergency Management. I, first of all, wanted to comment, I was glad to see commission support for our veterans program last Friday. I'm not a veteran, but I try and so show support and honor for those that are, so. Number two, I just wanted to make mention of our towns and township meeting tonight at the For-H complex. We've got a gentleman coming from Pier to talk about a new program for damage assessments. Should we ever have another disaster declaration, that's called Crisis Track. It will greatly improve and simplify the method and the way we do this. It's been used up in the northeastern part of the state last year with great support. Everybody thought it was good. They'll be able to take a laptop or a smartphone, go to a damage site, take a picture. The GPS will be automatically recorded. And if they do the proper way of getting everything done, taking a picture, then they can send it through my office, I'll send it to Pier. It may eliminate the process of a FEMA representing coming out to each township and looking at each site. If that looks good in Pier, they won't even come out, so. It'll be a great program. We're hoping to see as many of there that can make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Harold.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, it's time for commissioners to give a report about anything. I'm going to take a personal privilege here and say, Harold, yes, we did honor our veterans. I wanted to thank our Veterans Service Officer for putting forth a opportunity to honor our Vietnam veterans who served in that particular theater. During that period of time of we were there, I think Commissioner Errands and Commissioner Poppins joined me. We were able to talk to a lot of service veterans. And I do want to thank publicly our retiring VSO officer, Susan Irons. I asked her to be here today and I couldn't put this on the agenda because it was too late and she is unable to attend. But I do want to thank her for her service, for her nine years of service. And I just want to share with the public that I had the privilege of recruiting Ms. Irons because our Veterans Service Officer at the time resigned. We had most of our veterans at that time that were going up to Minnehaha County to get the services that they needed. And when Susan came down, we saw a drastic change in that. In fact, we saw huge numbers of individuals coming not only from Lincoln County, but from Minnehaha County as well. Susan put on countless number of programs for veterans, whether it was Vietnam, World War II, or whatever theater of engagement that these young men and women served in. And if you heard from the veterans themselves, the appreciation that they had and the respect that they had for her, it was heartwarming. And it was not only that she sent them with the services that were being provided, whether it was housing or qualifying for health situations. It was the counseling that she did in addition to that. Because she was a company commander in Afghanistan and she is a graduate of West Point and her daughter is a graduate of West Point. And that whole military family is, is serving somewhere, her sons are as well. So I just want to say, Susan, if you, if you happen to see this video, thank you for your service. Thank you for your service to our veterans and thank you for being a credit to Lincoln County. If there's any other commissioners that would want to make a comment, they certainly can.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your comments. I align myself with all of them. First of all, I want to thank our current VSO, David Ackley. He did a excellent event, our excellent event that he put on. We had more than, more veterans there than what we thought we would. And we had a very good turnout, both of veteran supporters and veterans. So he did a great job of putting that event on. We read the resolution that the commission passed here at the meeting. And then he opened the floor up for veterans just to either share their stories or talk about different organizations that they're involved in. I think one of them was Honor Flight. And then there was another Vietnam veteran who, and this is the great thing about meeting with these folks, he does a podcast from right here in Lincoln County. And he interviews these other Vietnam veterans and others. And he, you go on YouTube or you go on the podcast channel. Excellent marketing and advertising he's doing for his podcast. And these are, these are just incredible stories of local veterans that he features with their stories of combat and service and sacrifice. So it was a great event. It was great sitting down with each of these veterans and hearing their stories. Also with regard to Ms. Irons, she has done excellent work for Lincoln County. She's helped out countless number of veterans and she really put our program on the map here. And so what she did was just great. I had the opportunity to present her at the event with my battalion commander's coin here. This is a coin that we give out in the military. If anybody has been in, was previously in Susan's office, you walk in and she had 50 or 60 different command coins or challenge coins in her office there, put up on these plaques and everything. And you know somebody is doing a great job when they have a tremendous number of these coins given for excellence. And I had the opportunity to give her my personal command coin that I had made. This is something that commanders in the military do, it's time-honored tradition. And on mine, it, it says in Latin, versus ad finem, that means true to the end. And then on the back, it says, presented for excellence, battle-ready soldiers. So it was great honor to be able to give her this. And then I just really want to relay to the public and to the fellow commissioners here the appreciation we had for her, for her service.
Any other comments?
Do we need a executive session today? We do?
We do for subsection three.
Did you, excuse me, Steve?
Section three.
Section three.
I would so move, Mr. Chair, for executive session under that article.
Motion by Commissioner Poppins to go into executive session, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Errands. Christina, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Errands?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes, we are now in executive session. Motion by Commissioner Errands to adjourn, do we have a second?
Oh, wait, out of executive session.
Out of executive session, excuse me.
Second.
Second by Poppins.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
So moves.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Errands, second by Poppins. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are now adjourned.